Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Board of Commissioners for March 11, 2020. Please join us in the pledge to allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have time for citizen input? Is there one? No? No citizen input this morning?
Tricked us.
Okay, well, there's a blue sheet up here, but I guess that's not relevant for today's program. We have our consent agenda.
I was able to review the minutes yesterday. There was one, one little incomplete sentence. I think I circled it and left it on your desk, Sharon. Did you see that yesterday? Yeah, so.
Yeah, so that's on item, line item six. And then I had a couple of changes on seven and eight that I haven't gotten memorialized yet. So, so I move approval to consent agenda one through nine minus six, seven, and eight for today.
Six, seven, and eight?
Yeah.
That's fine. I'll second that.
Further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
Commissioner DeBohn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay.
They're minor changes, so I'll get them to you in the next air or two so we can finish it next week.
All right. Action item number one. Mr. Shemke?
Good morning. Tim Shemke, the Director of the Department of Solid Waste. We're in the process of replacing the transfer trailers that we use at Knott Landfill. We have four of those trailers. Last year, we replaced two of them. The document in front of you would authorize purchase of the remaining two. The original trailers have been in place since the site opened in 2006, so we've got a lot of life out of them. We solicited, we received only one bid. I want to apologize. In your documentation, we were under the impression that we were saving $20,000 per trailer with this new bid, and that's not the case. My staff was convinced that's what we paid, but when I went back and looked, the bids this year are within $1,000 of last year's low bid. We also had one contractor notify us the day before bids were due that they were interested in support and supplying a bid, but they couldn't do it within the timeframe allowed, and they requested that we extend the period for submitting a bid. Talking with Dave, we could not give proper notification in order to extend that since it was so close to the bid opening. So, we opened the bids, the one that we got for these trailers. I guess technically, we could reject this bid and go back out if we wanted to. I think that this is a good bid, though. We're within $1,000 of what we paid last time. We made some adjustments to the spec so that the trailers work well for us. We like the manufacturer. I'm suggesting that you approve this intent to, to award contract to.
I have a question. Does Keith Manufacturing and Madras do these kind of walking floors?
They, they supply the floors, and they do supply the floors for this, for this bidder as well. So, we will have the system in it. But they don't, they don't, they don't manufacture the entire trailer. It's just the walking floors.
But it is, these floors would be from?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
Yes.
That's excellent news.
I'm real familiar with the people. The people that own it are local. Yeah, it's long-term business up there.
Yeah. They're very popular. I mean, just about everybody uses them in their walking floors, so that's a really good.
And they do a fabulous program at the school, too, vocational wise, which is critical. Coming from the builder's breakfast this morning, and, you know, vocational programs, COO, CC, they need more students. So, that's a plea for all those seniors. Don't know what they want to do. Look into it.
So, with the scenario you laid out, if there is a protest period, is that an appropriate protest from, I guess, this is kind of a legal question, you know, for the other person that wanted to bid, is there a process for them to step in and say?
They could certainly file protests. It wouldn't be successful.
It wouldn't be grounds for, yeah, specific.
They had notification, and they get their bid in in time.
Yes, a notification that they wanted to bid, but they weren't able to because of timing, and then it's not grounds for a protest. Okay.
I point out that last year, when we bought those initial two trailers, we did have three bidders for that project. But this year, one bid and one hopeful. But we decided basically not to extend this another month in order to get notice on and do another solicitation. So, we're recommending that we approve this notice of intent to award contract.
So, the amount of 208,000, so these are $100,000?
Hundred and four, yeah. Mm-hmm, per trailer.
And 2006, did you say, the original ones?
Yes. Fourteen years out of those trailers.
Yeah, pretty magic.
Well, I'd move approval of the notice of intent to award contract to Wilkinson Industries.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Vote yes.
Commissioner DeBohn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the fire-free extra days. The community is very excited about that and doing everything we can.
All right.
So, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Chris Doty, Road Department. Randy McColey sends his regards. He's, he's sick this morning and has a cough that could wake the dead, so we left him, left him at home today.
Robertessin DM.
Yeah. So, Board, in late 2018, we brought you a draft, a light fleet policy, for your consideration. Chair Dare, you were Commissioner-elect at the time, and we had an opportunity, I think, to brief you on this, kind of in the lead-up to that process. So, hopefully it's familiar. You're familiar with it.
Yes.
So, at the time, there was concern expressed regarding the point system. We had included in the policy to assist with the replacement guidelines on how, how many points, you know, we sign points to a vehicle based on its age, mechanical abilities, its condition, number of miles. And there was some concern that it resulted in replacing vehicles in too soon of a period. So, at the time, the board tabled that for additional thought and consideration. Since that time, we got busy, board got busy, and we never circled the wagons to get this policy back before you and approved. So, that's what we're doing here today. Recently, staff, myself, and Randy met with Commissioner Henderson to talk about those replacement guidelines and some of the concerns that were shared at the, the meeting in 2018. We've made modifications in this, this latest draft that you have before you that basically add points to that, that point system that would result in us keeping a vehicle an additional year or two, in addition to other guidance language in the policy that specifies when a vehicle should be replaced, when it hits that, that, that top end point level. And so, you'll see those track changes and then additional change or two included in the policy, based on the fact that we've had two years now to think about it and tweak it a little bit. So, Board, overall, this policy sets goals for light fleet, establishes criteria for new acquisitions and replacement, and establishes criteria for vehicle utilization. So, the number of, of miles we expect a piece of fleet to have in order to justify its existence within the fleet. Overall, the, the policy provides consistency and informed decision-making as we seek to provide the most efficient and cost-effective fleet for the Deschutes County taxpayer. And if you've had a chance to review the changes, if you have any questions, be happy to take those.
Well, I can see just, yeah, moving that points, the point ranges up, just that touch will just give that little bit more usability or, you know, life to these vehicles. I know that we've got quite a few out there, and having it fit into this matrix is pretty valuable. Sometimes there are vehicles that aren't driven a lot of miles, but they're very important when they're needed. So, then they age, and then it's awkward to have a, a 10- or 12-year-old vehicle on the fleet that, you know, maintenance just comes from hoses and belts on that, too. So, it's good to have a good vision on the whole fleet.
I do remember that the county did own Priuses, and we still have Priuses, right?
There, I believe there's some in the fleet, but they're gradually being kind of retired out.
Based out.
Based out. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the biggest reason has been utilization. And so.
And you wouldn't be buying them again, would you?
I don't believe we're buying Priuses anymore. No.
Okay.
They just aren't utilized during the winter months.
Right. If we do, if we have a winter.
Well, we're going to have to have them under the new regime, you know, with the carbon, carbon footprint, electrification of our entire economy.
Yeah, I read something about that.
You should start buying those in a rapid pace.
Well, technology's improving, but, you know, it's certainly something that didn't work out for, you know, the various departments that have those within their fleet. So, winter has kind of ruled the day when it comes to vehicle choice, especially the last two winters that we've had, so.
Yes.
Are there other electrical, electric cars that are available for our fleet, or?
We, we don't think they're within the, the price point that we'd, we'd like to, to see. You know, they, they just haven't, you know, we'll, we'll be considering, you know, new, new fleet and electrical options, hybrids and whatnot. But I don't believe at this point, we have purchased any within the last few years.
Okay.
I'm gaining experience with an electric vehicle, so you can use me as a reference if you want to know the day-to-day of driving them.
So, I appreciate the new numbers. I, you know, getting a little bit wider spread. You know, my concern, as I mentioned originally, is that if you have a 10-year-old car that's driven 10, 100,000 miles, you're already at 20 points. And if you're absolutely great service reliability, maintenance, and condition, you're at 24, so you're already past, you're at replace, or what's it called, replacement, qualifies for replacement, I guess, or approaching replacement?
Approaching replacement.
So, that'll, and then for a few more points, you've got, you're there. But I like that you took away the needs immediate consideration at 28 points because, I mean, I, I just thought about the cars in my own family. I bet my, I bet my truck has 40 points or more, and my son's car has probably 36. So, I mean, it doesn't make sense that we have just everything, you know, just these, that the public vehicles are better than a lot of them, you know. So, I like the fact that we'll put a little more time on it and probably save some money doing that. So, because maintenance seldom, unless you're getting up to, you know, four and five points of maintenance, or on reliability, which are, you know, not very many cars fail at reliability or maintenance at that low, at that, at only that age anymore. I mean, so, so I'd support this fleet, new changes.
I'll make a motion, move to approve the Road Department's light fleet policy with noted changes as presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Tom?
Chris, I did nothing about the fleet policy, but it occurred to me that what, what happened with the CNG testing that we were doing on the, the light truck out there, is that still moving forward?
So, that period came to an end. The company transitioned to another, you know, they were able to take, you know, some of the data they obtained from that vehicle and, and further it. I believe they, and Commissioner DeBohn probably knows more about it than I do, but.
We can compare notes here.
Yeah, but they, they were, I think they, they hit the jackpot with regards to some, some funding that they were then able to pilot even further. So, you know.
So, yeah, in fact, I'd like to know the status of that vehicle, if it's still in the fleet.
Vehicle has been, the equipment's been removed from it.
Yep.
And so, it's just a normal truck within our fleet right now.
Unleaded gasoline, internal combustion. Yeah, good. So, yeah, we had committed to partnering with Oregon State University spin-off startup trying to do onboard compression of natural gas. So, where they put a tank in it, and, you know, I got to ride in it one time, and, and it was just a partnership, trying to show some technical demonstration. The vehicle is, it's good to hear that it's still in the fleet and it's used just on gasoline. They went to a trailer-based model, so they took that same engine instead of, in a vehicle. So, it's a trailer-based model, plug into a natural gas supply, use some to combust and some to compress to a tank. And that's turned out to be a, a market opportunity around the West a little bit. So, we onboard dynamics is often, often running, but it's not under the hood. It's on a trailer. So, they switched gears on us. But it's good to be able to partner with an organization like that. Thanks for reminding us.
I kind of missed, what did we learn?
Yes.
We always, I would say that it was just a partnership opportunity. They were looking for a fleet vehicle. We were able to purchase a vehicle. As I say, Chris can share the rest of the story from his point of view, but it was a policy choice to say, yes, let's partner with this research opportunity so that you can.
Yeah, it was less about what we learned and more about the information they got just from our use of it. So, our, our tech would park it, you know, the gas meter every night, plug in, and, you know, the next morning, had enough compressed fuel to be able to operate in the majority of the next day. They had telemetrics tied into that, that they were then able to, to use in, you know, further refining their, their product. We just got to experience what it was like to, to, you know, drive, you know, the drivability was identical to what you would experience from a normal operation.
I would think that, although, would be to figure out what the energy costs were comparatively and, you know, how far you'd go and all that. Did we get a report from them, or?
Um, I, you know, I wish Randy was here for that. He would, he would know all about that, but I could certainly follow up.
I could Skype him.
Yeah.
I think there was, yeah, equipment failure at one point. So, there, it was, it was functioning. There may not be a whole lot of data on this. And then there was a maintenance of the compressors, my understanding. So, yeah, it'd be interesting. And I'm sure they calculated the cost of operation. It is the, you know, the gallon gas of equivalent, GGE, is how you would come up with the number, so.
Yeah. No, that was fairly calculable.
Okay, so how does your Tundra fit in on this chart, since we both drive Tundras?
Uh, let's see. I've got, it would be 20 points in mileage.
Yes.
It would be, uh, let's see, probably.
No, you don't have to really share, but I mean, I was just like.
We're approaching 40.
Okay. I know, because.
210,000.
I was adding up my points, too.
Yeah. So, we're getting close in the Doty family.
I had, yeah, 39 points before I sold the Buick, so, in mileage.
Yep.
Okay, to our vote then, Commissioner DeBohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And thank you for updating this, and.
Yeah, thank you, Board.
And, yes, saving the county some money. Okay, we have our finance director. Good morning. Good morning.
Greg Munn, Acting Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer. So, item number 12 on your agenda is the annual renewal of the county's investment policy. So, the last time it was here before you was a year ago. And the policy that's presented to you today, there's no significant changes, no changes at all actually from the policy last year. And we also asked for a review of the existing policy by our Investment Advisory Committee. We did that last week, and then also the staff at the Oregon State Treasurer.
Yes. I noticed that we, the county, missed a couple of years. They missed 10 and 11. You know, you had the dates that it was revised, because it was done in nine, and then nothing was, happened in 10 and 11. Then they did it in September of 12. We missed 16, and we missed 18. So, I'm glad to know that we're doing it like every year. Just, I think it's important.
Yeah, I can't speak to those earlier years, but I think what happened this last year, as you can see, there was a pattern in December, other than 16. But last March was probably a carryover from three months before, from December. It was just done a little bit late. So, yep.
Okay. So, it's, well, now that it's your job, I know it will be done every March, right?
Absolutely. Yep.
Or before the end of the year, whatever the. So, just acknowledging that investment parameters is on page six of 11. That's kind of the, when we have our monthly investment report, that top page, and we talk about the percentages, you know, you, you give us a status of what's in LGIP and the corporate notes and stuff. This is the policy that he's referencing when we hear that investment report. So, we're setting the percentages here. As I say, I'm involved with the Investment Advisory Committee, so I get to hear the conversation. In fact, if anybody, another commissioner wants to join us sometime, please do, or, you know, we could talk about that anytime. But it's just interesting to hear, you know, what's a little bit more risky, what's a little bit more liquid, or where are we going to go with these dollars? Is it appropriate to have X amount in this percentage? So, there's a group that's a sounding board for these, and it's really good to hear the industry's perspective. And I want to thank the gentlemen that joined us. I guess, yeah, there's a lady, ladies and gentlemen that joined us for the Investment Advisory Committee.
Super helpful.
Yep.
Well, what I think is incredibly important is the fact that it is a conservative allocation. And, you know, when the, when the market goes down 17%, I know the county funds are actually in conservative, and maybe we're not going to get 2.5 from the yield, but we're still, we're, we're still in the positive. So, I think it's really important to always take care of our excess funding as safely as possible. So, I thank you for the good work.
Welcome.
Do you have any thoughts about, you know, the bottom that's been reached by the 30 year? And, I mean, it's a point where it's, maybe it's risky to own the most, what used to be considered some of the most conservative investments because they're so low, or do we, or maybe we just don't want to buy them for a while, or what's?
You're referring to some of the investments that are a little riskier within the parameters of the, of the policy?
Yeah, things that used to be maybe conservative could be considered risky because they're so low.
Yeah. I, I think, I think that risk is offset by a reduced interest earnings, essentially. So, which, the returns have really tanked. We're, we've lost over half of the returns on the Treasury rates in the last 30 days. It's pretty significant.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And then, that everything, the risk is we're going to miss any upside because we're in, they're so low now. They're not, they're not really even protecting capital because they're, if there's any inflation, they're actually, they're a negative return, so.
And that's, and that's generally why you're not seeing a lot of folks investing long-term. Everybody's buying short-term.
Yeah. Do we have long-term, though? Don't we, I thought we had some long-term.
Uh, we go out, I think our max is under four years, but I think our, our average is under a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. The yield curve is, is very low, and it's very flat over 10 years, so, or 30 years, actually.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about, is that it's gone, gone from three to, to less than one, and.
So, right now, I'm, I'm not, I'm not investing anything right now.
So, you just hold the cash for a while to see?
Today. And then, but you have, you have to look at home where you just, right now, it's in the low threes. So, you know, maybe we should, we can buy houses, right?
Positives or negatives?
Yes. There's, there's always a positive somewhere.
Well, the positive's for society, but it's not positive for the county's money. I mean, so, okay. All right. Well, I'll move approval of the county investment policy, F10, and authorize the Commissioner, County Administrator to sign the policy document.
And I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
Commissioner DeBohn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
I assume we're ready for next item?
Yes, next item, please.
I want to double-check that you received full-size printouts of the, the matrix.
I'll take that, yeah.
Full-size one?
Yeah.
This is the same.
You pack it. It's easier to read. I, I could take it. Thank you.
Is it the same as this one? It's not. That looks different. Pack it one's much smaller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matthew Martin, Deschutes County Planning Division, here before you today for deliberations on remand of wave-sear proposal for marijuana production off of Dodd's Road. The subject application is 247-1900029, excuse me, 19000870-A. Held a public hearing on January 29th to receive oral testimony and any additional written testimony submitted at that time. Following the public hearing, written record was left open for a 777 response and rebuttal period. All of the materials submitted during that open record period have been provided to you in your today's packet, as, as well as the entirety of the, the record since the beginning. That's been included in your binder and previously presented. So, what's before you? Again, this decision point on the, the remand issues. In summary, Land Use Board of Appeals reviewed the application and remanded that the Board's or county's decision on interpretation of youth activity center, as well as findings on odor control system. What it provided in your packet today, in addition, is a decision matrix constructed as a tool to assist in the Board's decision-making process. Again, I want to emphasize tool. It's not limited to the, the scope or details of the, of the matrix, but at least identifies prominent decision points staff has identified. With that, I will turn it back over to Chair Dare for, and make myself available for questions or assistance through deliberations.
Okay. So, per your matrix that you provided, did you want to review the staff comments for us, or do you, do you want to start with item 1A?
So, I want to at least emphasize that the Land Use Board of Appeals decision was based on the record that was available to the Board at the initial decision that they that they, they, Land Use Board of Appeals reviewed and remanded the decision back. So, I think it'll be important to keep in perspective the, the new evidence in the record during this remand public hearing process. And I emphasize that because item one A that's identified on the, the matrix is addressing the youth activity or the determination of youth activity center at Rhinestone Ranch. And as opposed to the Board, the question is, in accordance with Luba's original wave-seer decision, was any additional and persuasive evidence added to the record regarding foreseeability of the Rhinestone Ranch being considered a youth activity center?
So, I can kick this off a little bit with a position, so, the record, there, there's discussion about, you know, some activity on a rural farm parcel, horses and family activities, and the definition of a youth activity center, as I've held on to, is something that is a permitted facility of some sort. So, you know, the definition of that has, has kind of spun on us a little bit, but where somebody would drop off for a day, you know, drop off your children in a certified way for day youth activities, and, you know, I don't see that in this location. You know, the neighbor kind of wants to be half in and half out, but that is an EFU parcel. It's horse activities, and people may come and go, and this is exactly what happens, you know, all around the county. And, you know, as I say, I'm a four-H parent and horse owner, and we have people come and go also, co-located next to an approved marijuana site. So, I'm just acknowledging that we have scenarios like this in the county that don't preclude this application process, so.
Mr. Henderson, did you have any comments?
Yeah, um, so I think since the last hearing, to review the original testimony and then the new testimony, and I guess I, I just fundamentally disagree with the arguments of the, um, the applicant's attorney and their brief. I, uh, I don't think that our, um, she, she makes a comment, "The Board's comments of question demand during the remand also suggests that applicant is required to trespass, take the word of self-interested neighbors, and conduct a lengthy state gout of property to determine if the property violates the youth activity separation board, buffer." So, I don't think any of that's true. I think, and I specifically wasn't, isn't true in this, and this, this case specifically shows the problems with having marijuana grows from, started by people that don't live in the community, that aren't even rural, that the owner of the business hasn't even been here when he buys the property. There, the sign for Rhinestone Ranch is literally right across the street. It's within, I went out and looked at it again because we'd had this question, some of the, some of the, some of the placement of everything, literally right across the street from this property and from the act, the road access to this property. So, to me, you didn't have to trespass, you didn't have to, um, you know, take the word of self-interested neighbors, you didn't have to conduct a lengthy stakeout. You could do what you do in rural areas of Deschutes County. You could just go up and knock on the door and say, "What's the business?" And you could say, "Do you have a Facebook page? Do you have a, you know, do you have a website, et cetera?" So, I don't agree with her whole premise, which goes to the whole issue that, to me, which is that there was a provision created by the original commissioners as of prohibiting youth activity or creating a buffer by near a youth activity center. I think we're in the process of defining that, that term, and so, I think we should apply the Sterling test to this application and send it back to Luba if that's where it's going to end up, because I think it's reasonable that somebody would have found this, and, and they've said, "Well, it's not foreseeable." But, and I think this all got on a bad track because, and I'm not blaming staff, but staff had the understanding that, they didn't really say, "Hey, you better check these things to see if any of these things are within a thousand feet." But they could have, and they will probably do now if somebody comes in. Well, there's, not only can't be next to a school or a daycare, but you can't be next to youth activities, so you need to see what scope is. But I think under our ten-part test that we developed and adopted in Sterling, which I don't have a copy of here, but I remember some of the elements, this, this would qualify for that. And it also shows the ugly side of a mad neighbor. So, you get, since our last hearing, they're talking about what, you know, we've kind of pointed finger at the Board. Well, in the meantime, this owner has filed a code enforcement complaint against Rhinestone Ranch, which is exactly the bad, you know, kind of bad will we're not, we're wanting to prevent. So, I don't know whether there's the code enforcement, I don't know what that is. I noticed that visit, that property has for-sale signs, so not only the original appellant will have sold the property, maybe the, the neighbor that qualifies youth activity center may be selling the property. And so, I, I just think this still does qualify as a youth activity center. We should apply that test, the ten-part test, and see where it is. And my understanding would be if the Luba's not happy with how we handled the, the remand, then they can, they can then, we can appeal it to the Court of Appeals, I guess, or whatever. But, I mean, they don't, some of these things for me are very foreseeable, so that's a question of judgment. But we aren't asking anything arduous or difficult to do to find out if activities of this type are proceeding. So, that's my position.
Okay. Well, it is, um, I did find it interesting, Matthew, that, um, we focused on the Rhinestone Ranch, but there were, but when Luba made their original decision, their remand back to us, they seemed to ignore the four-H. And I know at some points in time, four-H has counted in Deschutes County because it's an activity that happens in our rural neighborhoods. So, it, it is interesting what they're saying to us, and in this case, from my research, the, I think, it doesn't, we're going to have to go, no, it doesn't apply in this moment, but somehow, we, because we didn't get additional information on that four-H, and it was, it seems to, you know, it was in the original record, but it didn't come through with the remand. Are you, are you up to date on the four-H at all?
Up to date in, in what respects?
Well, okay, we heard from the parties that do have the four-H at their house.
Absolutely.
And, um, was it a significant part? I mean, should it have gone in our original decision, maybe?
It was incorporated into.
It was incorporated, and so, and Luba did not, they ignored it, right?
They did not, as far as I recognize from the Luba decision, they did not remand on the four-H decision.
Okay.
So, are you suggesting that it's additive to the, you got the Rhinestone Ranch, and then you have the four-H, and between the two of them, both are readily as.
Well.
As discernible, or you can see them somehow, you can find out that they're there if you buy the property next door? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm, no, I'm saying that Sterling was clearly, the horseshoe was in, it did pass, what, nine, ten parameters for being a youth activity center, which existed on our books prior to my taking over as a county commissioner. And in this case, I, I, I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner DeBonne that it doesn't clear, it's not clear that it is, if Luba's already ignored it and remanded us, and it was in the original record for the four-H, apparently our just, our definition, hopefully with Sterling, will have a lot more weight in it.
What do you think about applying the Sterling test to this one? I mean, because when Luba remanded this, we hadn't, um, decided on the ten-part test and applied it to a property. Do you think we should, so in other words, we're, they're kind of, you know, this, that case is a way ahead of this case. Should we apply that test and see how many of those things? And then go back to Luba and say, to be consistent with, if it ends up back at Luba, we would say, "Well, we felt that this had nine out of ten, but this only, this had six out of ten, or I don't know how, four out of ten, or whatever, apply the test so that..." Because that's really the state of the law that we've, if somebody came in tomorrow and applied for one of these, I think staff would hand out that test and say, "Well, go see if this is going on among the neighbors."
Right.
So, that, so maybe we should be applying that to this case as part of it.
Um, could I bring up, ask for legal counsel? Adam, is it appropriate for you to come up at this moment? So, what Commissioner Henderson is bringing up is our test that we applied to the Sterling.
Yeah.
We didn't discuss, um, applying that test here.
Uh, I think the Board can certainly take judicial notice of the decision in the Nimsau case. And if you want to analyze, right, there's two proposed uses that have, the record is suggesting that two adjacent uses may be youth activity centers. I think we could refer to one as the four-H activities, and the second is Rhinestone Ranch. And I think the Board can certainly elect to take judicial notice of that Nimsau decision and apply those factors to those two uses to decide if they rise to the level of a youth activity center. As we discussed at length in the Nimsau case, and is also at issue in this case, you know, Luba's remand is, suggests that there is an additional layer over the top of those factors, and that's the foreseeability of somebody determining that it was a youth activity center. And so, the, as noted, the decision matrix is provided by staff, is intended to just be an analysis tool. Certainly, the first step in that analysis is whether or not there's additional factors and evidence to suggest that that determination was foreseeable. But we could certainly ask that, I mean, the Board can certainly wrestle with that question at the end after going through kind of the analysis of both Rhinestone Ranch and the four-H club, and then circle back to the foreseeability of that decision, or foreseeability of that YAC determination. It's really the Board's pleasure.
Okay.
I would recommend that perhaps we handle, I mean, so, my concern, of course, is getting enough information, getting guidance from the Board so that staff can put together a decision that reflects the Board's deliberations. And so, I think it would be helpful if we separated the four-H club activities from the Rhinestone Ranch and worked through one and then circle back to the other. If for no other reason, there's a fair amount of information in the record since your hearing on the nature and the scope of the activities of Rhinestone Ranch, and that's a more complicated decision tree to work through.
Okay. So, so therefore, you said if we want to look at those parameters that we established for Sterling, we could.
Yes, I think the Board can elect to take judicial notice of their previous decision.
Okay. So, is that something that we would need to do on a day continued, or can we do it at this moment in time?
I think the Board can do it at this moment, sure.
Okay, sure.
Sorry, I need to switch out a battery.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Well.
Give me one quick moment, please.
Sure, no problem.
So, as I started to say, I mean, I'm not going to be supportive of this path. You know, it is EFU parcel, next to EFU parcel with horse-based equine activities, but, and, and, and all ages show up, but it, it doesn't rise to a situation of a youth activity center that would preclude the application of another use across the street.
Um, Commissioner DeBonne, did you think about youth activity center? I mean, that was in your definition prior to, what was your definition then of a youth activity?
So, remember.
In rural Deschutes County?
Remember, at the time, was multiple-use agriculture and EFU. That was in the original parcels that could be concluded. MUA-ten and some EFU are very small parcels. We have one-acre EFU, we have one, two, and five-acre MUA-ten. So, then, and we also have authorized, you know, daycare at residential, in rural residential areas. And this happens in where I live also. We have, you know, daycare houses. So, that was the idea, registered daycare facility, registered with the State of Oregon for dropping off a young child for the day so mom can go to work. So, now, this whole, you know, discussion is just evolving, and I'm watching it evolve. And, you know, this was not the intention, is to say EFU next to EFU with authorized EFU activity, this is a stretch trying to say, somebody's doing four-H, because four-H is part of it, as I say. And I live on a parcel with, I, in my backyard, as I say, it's a land use approval for marijuana production. And we were the exact example of that, four-H activities, club members coming over, families, the whole deal. So, that's why this just doesn't chive with where we started, you know, originally. We had the advisory committee, we had community members communicating about it. And, you know, it does boil down to EFU next to EFU, which was exactly what happened in the Sterling case. And that, that was the, kind of the pivoting point for me. I'm like, "Oh, yeah, so this is a non-conforming use, which is fine, you know, let's allow this wonderful activity out there at the Sundance Ranch, but it's EFU next to EFU. So, how can one EFU authorized use voted on by the citizens and the state and given to us by the state legislature?" And I mean, I didn't start, I'm not supportive of the whole scenario, but if we honor land use in the State of Oregon, a system that's one size that fits all, this is right where it jumps off the tracks, when we have to try to twist and contort ourselves to make a different conclusion. So, that's why, I mean, it just doesn't add up for me.
Okay, thank you.
But, so I would say in response, but in the name, Nimsmo, what is it, Nimsma?
Sterling.
Sterling, call it Sterling, it works out better.
We have adopted a test, and two of us have adopted a test.
Yeah, and I'm acknowledging that, I'm just.
So, now it's a matter of applying that test, I guess, to this. But I, in terms of whether there's, you know, new evidence in the, yeah, so, you know, as we established in that decision, there's very few cases that you'd ever apply a youth activity center. So, that's just your position, and that.
Yeah.
That hasn't been ours, and so.
Yep.
I guess that's the issue to me, is that, how are we going to apply it? And, and this has many of the same characteristics as Sterling does to me. I mean, there's a facility, there's marketing, there's frequent use, there's regular use. I mean, we, we have had testimony of that. The new testimony here is that, um, there was, the new testimony that came out in the hearing and in the letter after that was really that there was no effort made by this property owner to determine if there was any activities around there, that, and, and it's been shut, it's been testified to that there's no, it's not a hard path. It's, like I said, it's, you go knock on the door, it's that simple. Or you look on the web, it's not some huge research project. It's, it's very easy to find this out, and, and, and it's, I think it's very normal if you're moving into an EFU area to find out what's going on around you, so, that's my view.
Commissioners, in envisioning the findings and how we craft the decision, I would recommend that perhaps we start first with the four-H club. And I think there's kind of three, three findings, three questions that the Board can answer and really work into the four-H club, just to make sure we're all on the same page with the process. I mean, this is just my suggestion.
Okay.
Question number one, do you want to apply the Nimsau, or take judicial notice of your Nimsau or Sterling Drive decision and apply those factors in to the four-H club? Step two, do the four-H club activities rise to the level of youth activity center based on those factors? And then, step three, is there new evidence in the record? You know, something more than what Luba already reviewed suggesting that that youth activity center determination was foreseeable? I think we could go through those four or three questions with regard to the four-H club activities first, and then circle back and talk through Rhinestone Ranch. As I noted, Rhinestone Ranch is more complicated, so maybe starting with the easier cases makes some sense.
Okay, you say that?
Yeah. So, going back to question number one, I think we already know the answer, but does the Board want to take judicial notice of your recent Sterling Drive decision? but does the board want to take judicial notice of your recent Sterling Drive decision and apply that 10-factor test to the 4-H club?
I do.
I would, yeah.
And I would not. And now I think the, uh, all the work begins, uh, working through those 10 factors, um, uh, as they apply to the 4-H club. And, um, we have a copy of at least, Matt has a copy of that decision right here. The first factor is, uh, are there separate buildings, facility, or area for use?
For the 4-H club?
For the 4-H club. This is the.
You need to summarize what's in the record. I don't remember if there's separate buildings or facilities for use.
Uh, record includes statement from attorney for Mr. Olson, attorney being Michael Gottlieb, which is quoted in the board's decision stating, uh, host 4-H club meetings from January, August, every year, when club meetings and practices are held on the property biweekly. In addition to the residents on the property, the activities utilize an outbuilding and an outdoor facility pen.
Yes, then.
Okay. All right, so that's number one. Okay, so what's two?
And you agree with, uh, separate.
Yeah, um, is that foreseeable? We will ask that at some point in time.
We'll come back to the.
Right.
My recommendation is we work through the factors and then we, we talk through whether there's additional evidence in the record on the foreseeability piece.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's in the context of what we're working, and honestly, I'm thinking just how to write the decision. And so I'm kind of thinking through just the logical steps of the decision and working the board through the, uh, as I see the findings being drafted. Uh, so then the second of the Sterling Drive factors, uh, youth recreation activity accommodated regularly. And Commissioner DeBon, I'm assuming you're.
Yeah, I'll say something.
Not agreeing to.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so then the second is, uh, youth recreation activity accommodated regularly and, uh.
You already said it was through January through August. It's like on a monthly basis or something?
What is?
Semi-monthly? Or maybe even more than that in summer?
As specified by the applicant, or excuse me, uh, Mr. Olson's attorney, um, that the activities are from January to August every year, um, biweekly.
Biweekly.
So to me, that's regular.
Okay. Uh, adult supervision provided.
That'd be yes.
Yes.
Uh, specific toys, games, or equipment available for the activity?
Typically there is. I mean, that's, um, how you do 4-H.
Yes.
Uh, is it a permitted or licensed activity?
Was Mr. Olson licensed with the state as a 4-H leader?
Record doesn't include that detail.
I don't know if there's such a thing.
Well.
With the county, but I don't think you actually had to be, I don't know.
No, I, I do believe I would, I read about a case a while ago and they were, I, I thought you could like really somehow, yeah, maybe with the county, but, okay, so there's nothing in the record?
But I think this permitted license would be the activity itself. And I don't think you have to have a license to do a 4-H activity. Remember that came up in another case where it was a question of whether the person was acknowledged by OSU extension or something. There was a, I don't know, case one time that we had here that was. I don't know, we could look at the record if, I don't know the, I don't remember in the evidence whether there's any.
I'm acknowledging that that's the extent of the detail provided in the record regarding these activities.
So that's all?
That's all.
Okay.
What exhibit is that, that letter you're looking at? I think it's in my book here.
Mr. Gottlieb's original, um, submittal from, uh, 2018, February 28th of 2018, Exhibit 22.
Okay. So for 4-H activities, I'd like to acknowledge that that's, it's a phase of a family's, um, utilization of a property. So as in, uh, young kids get involved with 4-H, they do it for four, six, eight, maybe 10 years at the most, uh, and then it, it goes away. So it's not a function of, uh, ownership or, um, you know, farm activity other than the development of a, you know, young child and the experiences. And I support it and love it, in fact, uh, but it's just something that comes and goes, is my acknowledgement.
Oh, I, I disagree with you. I think when people are in 4-H, um, the leaders stay for a long time, depending on the range of their family. And it, normally it doesn't come and go and that's, that is a unique characteristic of, um, rural America. So anyway, but okay, I see the letter and there isn't any other detail. So for the 4-H. So what's, what was item six?
I'm, we're still looking for clarity on whether or not it's a permitted or licensed activity. It sounds like we're acknowledging that the record doesn't include it, uh, any information to suggest it's permitted or licensed.
Well, again, you know, that was, this test was developed after these hearings in a way, so it's not, nobody knew to present evidence to meet the test. So, but I, I don't think, in my impression, I would say no at this point unless we had evidence that was strongly said yes, because I don't think you have to be permitted to run a 4-H club. And I don't think you have to be licensed to have a 4-H club. By those referred to, I don't think a government agency has to permit or license you to do that, but I.
McKenzie Canyon was actually where it was at. The neighbors had said that they were 4-H, but they actually looked them up and never found their listing with the county.
But even if they're listed, I don't know if that means that they're prime permitted or licensed.
That was McKenzie Canyon case.
That's a technical question that we could have, if we knew this was a test and the next time this comes up, we can say, here's what you'd expect evidence on. And if there isn't evidence on it, then we'll assume it isn't. And so I, I don't know, I'd go on to six. I'd say no on five.
Uh, organized group activities?
Yes. Mr. Dare?
Yes. So, what's seven?
Uh, seven is school-related activities.
School-related?
Well, there isn't any discussion of it. I don't remember any evidence. My understanding, um, it's separate from school typically. I mean, if it was FFA or something, it'd be different, but I don't, there wasn't testimony about that, so.
The, um, attorney did say that they were going to have an outdoor school in the near future, but that's a future event, so that wouldn't be applicable. Okay, so what's eight?
Uh, usage, uh, frequency, regularity, intensity, number of participants exceeds the usual exclusive farm use usage by 50% or more. Uh, this is something above and beyond what you would expect on a, a typical farm use parcel.
I would say yes.
Okay, the frequency, yes. We don't really know how many. There's no, um, there's number, no quantities, you know? Okay, in the Sterling, we did have pictures and we had, you know, signed reports of releases. So that was, what was it, over a hundred and some, I think? Or no, over 250 signed releases. So, okay, so what's nine?
So you're, uh, Commissioner Dare, you're suggesting that, uh, it does not exceed the 50% or more? Or that there's no evidence in the record to suggest that it does?
50%?
The fact is that the uses exceeds usual exclusive farm use by 50% or more. And Commissioner Henderson, uh, thinks that it does and still looking for clarity from Commissioner Dare on that factor.
So what, let me tell you why I think it is, is that, um, so if you just have a farm parcel and you're, have horse, a hor- a couple of horses on or whatever, whatever activity you're doing, you would have your kids and maybe another kid or two around. But this is a club and, you know, my experience and knowledge of 4-H clubs is they're groups of kids, you know, not two or three. They're groups and they have, um, because otherwise you don't really call it a club. You call it, once you have your friends over. So, and that, that's the whole point of 4-H. And when you go out, you know, we have, all have a lot of note, um, examples of, uh, 4-H clubs at the fair, be in our, on our fairgrounds, where they have the, you know, you see all the signs for the various clubs in the barns. They're, you know, so it'd be very unusual to have a two or three person. So to get to more than 50% isn't a very high standard. So I, I do believe the intensity is sufficient to be a, um, a youth activity center.
You know, I wish we had a big, a deeper record, honestly, um, to go to be helpful.
Well, we did have oral testimony too, and I can't remember, um, I'd have to find my notes.
Okay.
Do you have a summary of the oral testimony on that, on these? Or would we have to take a break and find that? Or I guess we could go listen to it again.
I don't have a written transcript or summary of the oral testimony, but from what I recall, it didn't provide additional detail as, as to the, the number of, um, youth, uh, that, that attend the referenced, um, 4-H related activities.
Mm-hmm. Did not.
Did not.
So what is nine?
Uh, nine is, uh, is the use observable from neighboring properties.
Use what?
Observable.
Yes. I mean, it's, it's all pretty clear out there. There's not a lot of trees, um, in the re- area.
The farm activities would be observable or the.
The 4-H.
Related activities.
Well, either, because the. So where the, the property where the 4-H is just to the east of the, the two properties that were the applicants, and there's not very many trees between them. So, I mean, from the property, it'd be easy to see it.
But then again, they bought it in November and this went through August, you know, um, where they said they were working outside. If, it said, what, January through August, and they're probably working with animals outside in the summer. So that's, that's, that can go, I don't know, that can go either way, if it would have been observable. I, I guess I would, I would have to say no at that moment in time.
Does it say the property is observable or the activities are observable?
Uh, the factor you, uh, decided on for the previous, uh, case was the use itself is observable.
Oh, so you're saying that because of the time of year, they wouldn't see it?
Right. If it was, if they were there in September, would they have seen this? No, because our fair is the first of August.
Yeah.
So.
We don't know if they were there or not. All we know is that the deed was signed in November. Is that what we know? I don't.
I believe so.
We didn't really get specific evidence of when they were there looking at buying it. I mean, they might've been there in the summer. Yeah, I don't know.
September, October, yeah. Is, do we have a number 10 point?
Uh, number 10 is, uh, youth activities marketed to the public. Um, examples are website, social media, published or publicized.
Currently there's, I mean, in the complaint, um, well, this isn't on the 4-H, so I don't know. On the 4-H, on the Rhinestone Ranch, there was marketing. Is it marketed? I don't, I don't know if 4-H clubs are marketed to, um, the public in this, I mean, the location of them.
Um, well, I would think they would be on some level. Cause it's a wide range of, um, schools. You know, if you're going from nine to 18, um, can be a wide, uh, you know, a lot of different neighborhood kids could be involved.
In my experience, it's kind of an annual cycle. You know, if you're, if it's an animal club, you're going to do it for that season, maybe two years. And it's the club members that would advertise where the next event is. It's, it's somebody's house. Uh, either they'll do an educational exercise or a training exercise or a weigh exercise, but it's not like publicly advertised unless they're club members.
Okay.
Now I would just know, I mean, of, of course, this is, uh, going to be weighed against substantial evidence in the record on some of these factors and whether or not there's, uh, uh, evidence in the record on some of these, uh, close calls.
Right. We, we, we needed more evidence then, is what you're saying.
Um, I, I mean, what I'm saying is the board can only make, uh, these determinations based on the record that is in front of you.
Correct.
Well, I did, um, so there's the other, there's quite a bit of testimony that was, um, just looking at some of it now from different neighbors, um. I don't know if any of those had any specifics about, uh, what was these two, uh, two particular properties or not. Well, since you're going to have to do a lot of drafting and it's going to come back, maybe we could just make sure that Matt, you've kind of gone through the prior record and stuff and made sure there's no testimony from neighbors about this particular 4-H activity on the property we're talking about? Or anything else in the record? I mean.
Uh, I believe in the original record, there are comments from neighbors that also acknowledge that there are 4-H club activities occurring on the property.
Yes, um, the letter from Jerry Brandelick.
And it's, of course, the board's, uh, these are your own factors that you developed. I think the, the question is more of whether or not there's evidence of something, it being marketed to the general public.
And the Nashes also wrote about it, Janet and Keith Nash. That has 4-H groups on a regular basis?
Galucci's, um, just devised about their 4-H group. It's, it does reference that it's on, 4-H groups on record by the, verified by the, in office, by office in Redmond. So that's kind of the public notice of it. So what's our, so if we got through the 10-point list, we got a couple it sounds like we're not sure of.
Yeah, so, um, Commissioner Henderson, you, uh, thought factor number five, which is the permitted or licensed was no. Uh, I don't think we recorded a point of view from Commissioner Dare. Uh, factor number eight, nine, and 10, um, have all been, uh, struggled, uh, perhaps to find evidence in the record.
Right.
But I would know, remember, these are factors for consideration. These are factors that the board is looking at to inform their decision. They're not elements where each one of these needs to be met to rise to the level of, uh, of a youth activity center. These are just all the different things that you are taking into consideration and deciding whether or not something rises to the level of a youth activity center. And so I think that after going through those analyses, then the question to the commissioners is based on, uh, the assessment of the, the facts in the record, is this, uh, the facts in the record and these, uh, Sterling Drive factors, uh, is, uh, this a youth activity center?
So what are, remind me again what eight, nine, and 10 are?
Frequency, observable, and 10, I can't remember.
Yeah, the usage exceeds, uh, the usual exclusive farm use by 50% or more. Yeah, the usage exceeds, uh, the usual exclusive farm use by fifty percent or more. Uh, the usage is observable from neighboring properties, and youth activities marketed to the public, uh, website, social media, published or publicized.
So, so I, I said yes to, uh, eight is the intensity one?
Yes.
So I said yes to eight. What's nine again?
Uh, observable from neighboring properties.
So to me, the question is there, when were they buying the property? Not just when did they do the deal, when, when, when were they there looking at it? So, I guess, and we don't know if that's in the record or not, how they bought it, or why, you know, any of that. And then ten, um, is what again?
Uh, youth activities marketed to the public.
Oh, so there is evidence that as a, it is in a way, I mean, in the future, I mean, there are lists of where 4H clubs meet, so, and you, and so, and there's people that oversee that, those 4H programs, so that would be, um... If I was buying a property with this, this, these rules in place, I'd be contacting 4H to see what goes on in my neighborhood, but, but anyway.
Actually, according to the record, um, a letter from Linda Wallace, um, the se- second paragraph notes that when Mr., uh, when Peter Windsor first, um, was at the property, he leased his land to a tenant, and what followed was a succession of problems related to the mishandling of cattle. Neighbors on Cougar Trail had significant damage to livestock and property due to the tenant's negligence. And, um, he did support the neighborhood effort to get a C Y D lease terminated, so the tenant was forced out. And now they're saying, um, so he actually was there for a while before he just changed direction of that property. But he had a tenant there.
You know, that's a good point.
He had a tenant there.
The owner of the land, I don't know when, how long the owner has owned the land, that's different than the applicant.
Correct.
Where, why do we know it was November that it was bought by that owner?
Uh, I don't, I don't know.
You, you came up with November, so... Because if he'd had it for multiple years, then the owner knows about it, this was, you know, that's different. The applicant and...
A, um, there's a letter from February this year, I think. I saw one.
Okay, well, that's...
Commissioner Henderson, to, to your point, yes, I think, uh, these factors are perhaps better addressed than when the application was submitted, uh, because in this particular case, the, uh, app or the property owner has consented to this application being filed, but the property owner purchased the property, I think, several years prior to the application being submitted. The applicant and the property owner, in this case, are not the same.
It's in the record on February fifth, two thousand twenty. It said, um, purchased the property, he purchased the property on eleven sixteen, two thousand sixteen.
Oh, well, then they've had some multiple years to have seen, so it was observable.
Right, that's, that's in the record.
You know, that's, I don't know exactly who we're ruling on it, uh, but, you know, it's been made up that, well, it's this onerous test for the person that wants to do this grow facility to find out what's going on. Well, in this particular case, there was nothing onerous about it at all. The owner of the property had owned it for multiple years. They know what goes on, and they're, if they're on the property, they know what goes on in their neighbors. That's one of the things you notice, is your neighbors, especially with farming activity. You know, you know what everybody's doing around you, I mean, it's like you're doing your own yard after you lived somewhere three years. So, yeah, so that's kind of like, as I think about it, that's kind of a false statement or a test that they're throwing out there, the applicant's throwing out there, oh, we didn't, we couldn't have met this test, we, there's, it's not reasonable. But why don't you ask the guy you're buying it from who still owns it, or you're, you know, who's, who owns the property, that you're gonna do this facility that you're applying on?
So it sounds like because the owner of the property owned it for, uh, some period of time before that, uh, both commissioners believe that it was observable from neighboring properties, the use was observable. Commissioner Dare, is that correct?
Well, but he had a tenant on the property. So is he actually, can he legally be on the property if he has a tenant there?
I mean, it depend, depends on the terms and conditions of their lease arrangement.
Okay.
Typically, if you're leasing out your farmland, you're not borrowing yourself from... It's less restrictive than a house, for instance, where you, in a house, you gotta give notice, this isn't, there's a, farmland's not... Doubt there's many farm leases that say, I wanna lease this property, and I don't want you to come drive on it or look at it. And be a new, I don't know.
So it sounds like there are a number of, uh, factors that both commissioners agree are yes, and several others that are, uh, debatable based on the, uh, the limited information in the record. I think then the next step is based on those factors, based on this discussion, uh, do the commissioners believe this, uh, the 4H club activity rises to the level of a youth activity center? And I, I don't think it's a majority rules, it's nothing like that. The intent is here, it's really, the factors inform the discussion, the discussion informs your decision, um, on whether or not this is a youth activity center as you've, uh, interpreted the code.
Yeah, I think it does rise to that.
Well, I'm not sure if it's fifty percent or more for the frequency on eight. I, I have a couple no's. I know that we didn't expect to have all of them yeses, but, all right, so I need to think about that.
Okay. So then I think the next is to really turn to the foreseeable piece, and very particularly to Luba's, uh, decision. I unfortunately, I, I apologize, um, both of my hearing aids have gone out during the meeting, and I care...
Can we take a little recess?
I need to go grab another battery, if I could.
Can we take a five-minute recess then? Thank you.
I apologize.
Okay.
Matt, while we're recessing, could we, can we get a list of those ten factors somehow, copied? I, I don't know if there's one in this, is there one in the prep, or?
No.
No.
Okay, excuse me, thank you.
So, the, really, the last factor, and I've got in front of me Luba's decision, I'm happy to work through it.
Yes.
The last decision point is really the foreseeability of this decision. And the reason why I pulled up Luba's decision is most of the record, most of what the county commissioners just considered was already before Luba. And as the commissioners may recall, during the hearing on this matter, one of the questions that came up, is this an opportunity to revisit, really, the foreseeability of the youth activity center determination? And I noted, I think, right, the scope of remand is often one of the contested issues on remand. How far can the commissioners go on remand is frequently an issue that comes up. And I noted at that time, I thought if there was additional facts and circumstances, if there was additional evidence that was submitted to the record that perhaps is not in front of Luba, that that would certainly be relevant to the commissioners in opining on this piece. And so that's why the decision matrix represented in that way. And I think that still is a pending question in front of the board. Is there, does the board want to make an assessment of the foreseeability of the youth activity determination relevant to the 4-H Club based on any additional facts or circumstances that were added to the record?
Like what? Like what, like what would, are you suggesting that we'd make it based on?
My concern frankly is that there has not been much that's been added to the record differing from what Luba already reviewed on this particular question. And so going back Commissioner Henderson to your original question, is this an opportunity to revisit that determination? I don't think the scope of remand in this case was inviting revisiting the foreseeability. I think if there's additional facts and circumstances that perhaps an argument can be made that this is something that needs to be debated.
Well, on the issue of foreseeability, there was evidence that the neighbors were open to being visited or contacted to say what they do. So that's a, again, in the process of buying something, would you check with the surrounding properties? That wouldn't be unusual, I mean, it'd probably be typical. So, there was evidence about that that would aid in foreseeability, that if they'd looked. Like, for instance, there seems to be this absolute defense that if, boy, if this was something that had been permitted, if this was a, then you could find it on some state website of permitted activities, we'd be able to find it. Well, that takes work. It probably takes me as much work to do that as it does to go knock on the door. So, I guess my point is, is that that would be an indication that the neighbors were willing to talk about it. It wouldn't be a trespass, as the lawyer for the applicant had said, if you went down and asked somebody what they did on their property. So, that would be new, I think, that they'd be willing to be contacted. That would be the ease of finding out. You know, the more, see, the more I, we talk about today, the more I think it's a red herring that this applicant couldn't have found out. Because particularly, now that we've talked about this issue, that the person that owns it's owned it for multiple years, they're aware, in my opinion, they're aware of what goes on next. So it's very, you probably could ask the person that's buying. And that was, I don't remember Luba really talking about that, that difference. If it'd be just somebody buying the whole thing a month before they apply, and it's in the depth of winter, you might, that's one thing. But that isn't what the facts are here.
That isn't the fact, right. The fact in the record from February 26th of 2018 clearly states, well, actually, it says that he, last summer, he leased his land to, and brought in the cows.
Which exhibit is that?
It's number 2020. Second paragraph.
Do we need anything else, or?
Are we good then, with that?
Well, I was looking for reviewing Luba's decision. I thought you had asked if Luba had discussed the opportunity to visit with neighbors prior to submitting an application purchasing the property and the like. I'm not, I don't recall directly if they reached that particular issue. I would note that they, reading from their decision, they directly noted, Luba directly noted, "In addition, while we doubt whether a youth-oriented farm use or residential use could limit a farm use on a property that is owned EFU, it may be that, under different facts and circumstances, the county could interpret the undefined phrase 'youth activity center' in a manner that would not violate ORS 215, 416, 8A, or ORS 475B.486." And there's a long footnote that I don't think we need to go into. I think the key purpose in there is really identifying different facts and circumstances that lead to a different interpretation of the youth activity center term. And I think the decision will be, will need to rely heavily on what those different facts and circumstances are that are supporting the board's decision.
But that's only true, if I'm not mistaken, if we're going to convince Luba that these activities amount to a youth activity center, right? If, we would have to have, one option is we convince them that it was foreseeable. The second is, is that it gets appealed to the next level as to whether or not their rules are what should control this. Or should the local county be able to create reasonable rules about where separation distances and everything else? So, if they disagree with us, the next step would be an appeal to the Court of Appeals, right?
Yes, but I would, the scope of these proceedings get narrower and narrower at each step along the way. And the only thing at issue before the commissioners are these remand issues. The only thing that will go back to Luba are necessarily these remand issues. And so that may, I mean, I very much understand what you're saying, but I think the analysis that is in front of the commissioners is whether or not, I mean, the task for the commissioners is to interpret youth activity center within the guise of Luba's decision and the concern on these two statutes. And particularly, if there's additional facts or circumstances that lead to, that bolster your youth activity center interpretation. And I think first, certainly, we've looked at the NIMZAL factors, which the board, certainly those proceedings were merely the zone. The deliberation on that case was prior to the public hearing in this case, and the decision was finalized during the open record period. So I think the board can note that they've reached this interpretation in another case and have that decision be attached to this case. And then it's working through those factors comparing to the facts and the circumstances that are in the record in front of you today. I mean, I'm feeling repetitive, but I think that the task that is in front of the board is fairly narrow. And I'm hearing, so forgive me, but just to go back to the three, two of the three commissioners are agreeing to take judicial notice to rely on those NIMZO factors. We've worked through those factors. One commissioner agrees that they rise to the level, that the 4-H Club activities rises to the level of youth activity center, Commissioner O'Dare is so, considering that issue. And then the last question is whether or not there's additional facts and circumstances to suggest that that's foreseeable. And I believe I heard Commissioner Henderson agree that yes, because the neighbors are willing to express on the open record that they would have been willing to talk to applicants. So I think we're still looking for guidance on both whether or not it rises to a youth activity center and whether there's new facts and circumstances from Commissioner O'Dare.
Correct. So, if you do look at the record from Jan, from February 26th of 2018, it said, last summer, so that would be the summer of 17. And then the current record said that he actually purchased the property of 1116, 2016. So, he definitely had been there prior to, and when he, you know, having that, both of those documents in our record, he definitely was there the summer of 16 in order to see that 4-H activity next door. You know, because what I had said originally wasn't observable, but, because I thought, you know, but now, going back with the years, it definitely was observable to him. So, that makes me feel better that the 4-H does fit our youth activity center parameters, especially because they say bi-weekly from January to August.
Okay. Commissioner, I'm hearing your consent, your agreement with Commissioner Henderson that it was foreseeable.
Yes, it was, when you, especially when you compare the, in, you know, the original record from 2018 and then this new record from 2020, that letter.
And then certainly back to the second issue, whether or not it rises to the youth activity center view.
I believe it does. I, you know, I'm not sure if it's 50% or more, but, you know, that's where I'll leave it.
So, I would just like to acknowledge, I mean, we're talking about the time of the application here. We're not talking about today and how it might have evolved since the application. So it's, it's a disconnect, and maybe you can help me figure this out. A disconnect from what it looked like the day the application came in and what we're trying to define a youth activity center is now. So we're referring to a time in the past when somebody, how would they have known that this, you know, the deliberations today, which seem to be defining what they should have known, how would have they, would have they known to even try to deal with this? So, I'm just acknowledging this.
When did the definition, when did the terminology "youth activity center" come in? And the case that I'm first aware of, that happened out on East Deschutes County, was about a 4-H operation in a community, and that they did, that was not approved. And that was prior to me being on the board.
I mean, the term "youth activity center" was certainly, the term and the fact that "youth activity center" imposes a separation distance was codified long before this application was.
Long before, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Commissioner O'Dare, you made a comment, but I.
I just said, yes, this is a youth activity center. The usage exceeding EFU use by 50%, I'm not sure if I can determine that, but everything else is applicable.
So, having identified one youth activity center that imposes a separation distance, does the board want to continue on to consider Rhinestone Ranch, or do you want your decision to?
I think it's either both, because, you know, Luba might disagree with us on one and agree with us on the other. What do you think?
We can go through it, because now that we do have our 10 points.
Okay, I'm taking some quick notes on kind of the process for considering this. So, as the board is well aware, there, in the original proceedings, and again, on remand, there's been a lot of evidence submitted, testimony concerning the legality of Rhinestone Ranch. And so I think that changes the analysis a little bit. I think the first question is, first, really, can an illegal use be considered a youth activity center? There was arguments going back to the original record, kind of stylizes first in time, first in use, that if a use is occurring, but it is illegal, that that cannot rise to the level of a youth activity center. So that would be the first question.
But, but, see, I don't think we should consider that, because we don't know. We're not even the decision maker on legality of this. I mean, we're, we're just talking about, to me, whether or not these activities are going on there. I mean, now the applicants, you know, going after them themselves to try to stop it or get them in traffic. But, I don't know. Think, I don't know if we're the best people to try to make that decision. Like a Court of Appeals decision.
Well, I think that's why, I think the first question is that the board needs to answer is whether or not an illegal use can be considered a youth activity center.
An illegal use.
A use, an unpermitted use, a use that is not allowed under the Deschutes County Land Use Code. And then the second question is whether or not all of the activities that are occurring at Rhinestone Ranch are legal. Or are there any, I mean, it's clear that there is.
How would we know, I mean, how would we know those things? We don't.
Well, our community development department is asked to adjudicate matters like this all the time. It's been determined with a meeting that these are horse-related activities. And, you know, they're, you know, maybe offering things that could be construed as outside of a permitted use, but nothing jumped out as, you know, a code enforcement item. So that was the issue of this day. So then, the topic of would an unpermitted activity trump the application of a property next door? I couldn't conclude that. I mean, that just doesn't even make sense, you know, the logic of saying somebody set up somewhere, unpermitted activity doesn't fit in the zone, and a permitted activity would be precluded because of it. So I'm just letting you know my clear thought on that.
Well, I agree that if there was none from, you know, if there was an illegal activity going on there, that might, we couldn't use that as criteria, but we're not going to decide that. I mean, it may be that CDD hears it all the time, but we don't. We, I don't know if I've ever heard whether or not, whether I've ever been asked to rule on whether something's.
If that's what code enforcement is.
Well, I know, but the point is, then why are we considering it with regard to a land use decision? We, and because, and the other part of this is if that was going to be a factor, we could have solicited a lot more testimony about specifically what was being done, what were the activities? Because I can't in my own mind break out what might be legal and what might not be legal. I mean, I don't, I don't know that any, you know, I don't even know the scope. So, that was beyond the scope of our hearings. We didn't have any evidence, we didn't solicit evidence on that, we didn't ask questions about that. We didn't try, we'd have to have a hearing to find out. So, we're really just in the hypothetical to me. And I just, I don't think it's ours to rule on. I think we just rule on what we know, which is these activity, I mean, either that or open up the hearing again and get evidence of what goes on there. But I don't even think that's our, I don't think that's our job. At least it has never been on any other land use.
Well, so an input to this body would be a definition of, you know, EFU, you know, authorized EFU activities, farming activities on an EFU-zoned parcel. Hard stop, because you don't work outside that box at that, this time.
Well, is a 4-H, so is a 4-H club an EFU activity on a farm, or farm use on an EFU parcel?
Yes.
Did you decide that, or who decides that? Is that in the code? I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, we've never have dealt with this, and we're at the end of this hearing, and I don't see how we go back, go through all that.
Commissioner, I think the question that is clearly in front of you is whether or not the Rhinestone Ranch rises to the level of youth activity center. The applicant has argued vehemently that it cannot be considered a youth activity center because the activities that are occurring at Rhinestone Ranch require land use permits, which the Rhinestone Ranch does not have. And so I think that question is validly in front of.
Well, they've argued that, but you've briefed, you've taken the position in prior hearings that, that CDD had met with them and thought it was okay what they were doing. So I don't know. I mean, how am I supposed to know as a decision maker?
There, we added, staff added evidence to the record. CDD met with the property owners and the operators of Rhinestone Ranch a year ago, that they represented, that there were certain activities that were occurring at the property at that time. CDD at that time made the determination that those fit within an equine use, which is allowed outright, excuse me, as a part of a farm use parcel. There was concern that some of the activities that were advertised on their website would perhaps go beyond an equine facility. But Rhinestone Ranch represented to CDD staff at that time that those activities were not necessarily going to occur. Since that meeting occurred, there was additional evidence that was discovered that some of those additional activities were in fact occurring. And so I think it's a, CDD's determination a year ago is perhaps best described that some of the activities at Rhinestone Ranch could fit under an equine use. Other activities that have occurred at Rhinestone Ranch, I'm not sure CDD has made a determination on whether or not those would fit as an equine use. They were informed a little over a year ago that those additional activities were not occurring on the property. This is my assessment, I wasn't at the meeting, but this is my understanding of what occurred. And so of course, I think it's a valid question for the commissioners. If you're relying on some of those additional activities to determine that Rhinestone Ranch is a youth activity center, then it forces the analysis of whether or not those additional activities are permitted or if it's irrelevant, because unpermitted activities can rise to the level of a youth activity center. That's how I think it brings up the legal versus permitted issue.
So, what you're saying then, Adam, is that we've gone from, when we originally heard the case, we were, we saw the pictures, you know, the 14 kids on their horses with their helmets, with an instructor on the ground. And what we said was a youth activity center, since that point in time, has gone to additional events, which are no longer within that equine category, and they're, now it's considered unpermitted. That's what you're saying to me today.
CDD, what I, CDD staff a year ago opined that some of the activities, what was represented to them, fit within an equine use, which is allowed outright. Clearly, more is going on at the site beyond just those facilities, or those uses. And so I think it behooves the board to identify which activities are occurring at Rhinestone Ranch are appropriate to consider as part of a youth activity center, and which activities as part of Rhinestone Ranch are not appropriate to consider as part of a youth activity center because they need separate land use permits. I'm presuming that the board agrees that only permitted activities can be considered a youth activity center.
I agree with that.
Well, so, trying to help you with this decision, Will Grove states in this memo, "The stabling or training of equines, including but not limited to providing riding lessons, training clinics, and schooling shows are allowed outright as a farm use." "The uses of Rhinestone Ranch is described clearly fell within the definition of farm use." Specifically, equine-related activities and uses described for the public, training, riding, education at camps, classes, or pony parties, fell within riding lessons. So, are you saying, do those, so if, so it sounds like we have a lot of things that we would characterize as a youth activity going on, and it's legal. Is that what you're saying?
I think the board needs to decide which activities at Rhinestone Ranch are appropriately occurring without a land use permit, which ones are not occurring, or which ones cannot occur without a land use permit, and consider only the permitted activities when deciding if it's a youth activity.
Well, if we just did the ones that Will Grove said we could do, that's enough for me. I mean, that's, I guess, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
I don't know what other things are going on there, and I don't, I don't think it's the scope of this for us to decide which ones are permitted. I, I'm sorry, I don't think we're informed enough to make that decision, what's permitted and what isn't. And it's not my, we don't do this.
Well, we're working on the record right now. We are just working on the record, so it is what is in front of us.
And I'm reading from the record. This is exhibit number, it's a memo 67.
Commissioner, perhaps an example on the other side. I mean, if the commissioners agree that only uses that occur with permits or that do not need land use permits can rise to the level of a youth activity center. And there are, there's evidence in the record of activities that are occurring at Rhinestone Ranch regarding visits with Santa Claus, for example. Those activities, I don't believe CDD has opined, can occur without a land use permit. So if the commissioners are relying on those activities, deciding that Rhinestone Ranch rises to the level of a youth activity center, it necessarily rises the level of the, raises the question of the legality of the use.
Santa Claus, that we're going to say that, whether that's the, that's not what I'm relying on, is whether or not the fact that they once a year have Santa Claus, whatever, parties or whatever, that's not what I'm relying on to call a youth activity center. Is that what you mean? Is that what you're asking?
It's, I'm, I'm, I'm parroting the argument from the applicant on some of the concerns with these activities.
Well, I'm sorry, but it seems to me that what the applicant's trying to do is point out all these activities that are not permitted, to try to shut the place down so they don't have an opponent. That's what it seems like to me. They're not doing some great public service. So, I'm not really relying on that. I'm relying on what the paragraph I just read. Providing riding lessons, training clinics, schooling shows, education camps, classes, or pony parties are all within riding lessons. So there's quite a bit of that activity that goes on there, and it's known, it's visible. I mean, it, it probably meets the 10-point test better than a 4-H club does, in my mind.
Would the commissioners prefer to go through the 10-point test and through that analysis?
Sure. I mean, I would.
Of course I would, because one day, Santa on the ranch, I, I mean, that is now making it unpermitted?
No, I think it's, there's activities that were, that were identified on their website outside of this review process, that identified after-school programs, homeschooling, holiday events, among other camp and associated activities that went, that appeared to go beyond a farm use, as defined and quoted in the memo and by Commissioner Henderson. That's the concern, is that some of those activities may be included in the record or used as justification to characterize this as a youth activity center, that go above and beyond. Those activities can be permitted potentially as such things as commercial activity in conjunction with farm use, or agritourism. I think that's the, that's the pivot point that we're trying to identify here. And if it's to look at the definition of equine facility, and within those parameters and what's in the record, identify that those operating characteristics or factors justify or characterize a youth activity center. So it's, if we're falling under the definition of equine facility or stabling, what's in the record to identify that those characteristics of that equine facility, farm use, rise to the level of youth activity center or not?
Just state some, we need guidance from the board to write the decision. I mean, it, it, it's as simple as that. If Rhinestone Ranch rises to the level of a youth activity center, what are the operations, what are the uses, what are the component parts of Rhinestone Ranch that rise to that level? One of the additional findings that we will have to make is addressing the applicant's concern that some of the activities, if perhaps not all of the activities at Rhinestone Ranch, are occurring without a land use permit. The board will need to address that issue in its decision. It's been a validly raised point in part of these proceedings, and we need to address it.
But to me, we need to have a chart, say, here's the things that we think are legal, allowed under land use law, et cetera, and here's the things we're not sure of, and here's the things we're definitely sure aren't allowed, or whatever you want to do. But I don't have any of that in my head. I don't have any idea what your, what the scope is of, you think column A is versus B versus C. And so to sit here and make that decision, I can't. And so that was why, I mean, because it, for one, it hasn't been decided by CDD in, in terms of the enforcement action, which would be an indication of some body that knows the rules applying them. But, so all I know is what I read here, but I don't know if that's everything. I just, this is a memo that's prepared for us for this round of decision-making, and there is quite a bit of all these things going on that would, so if you want to say, take that first paragraph from, that Will Grove's wrote, and then apply those to this test, is that, where would we be on that? Or is, but is there, are there other things that aren't in that paragraph? You see what I'm saying? I don't know that. I don't really have in my head what goes on there all, all the time. I, I get the general gist of it, but I, you know what I'm saying? So maybe we need to, I don't know, recess, or reconvene in a week, or next time we reconvene and have a list of those things. Because I, I didn't spend a lot of time reading the complaint from the applicant as proof of anything other, I mean, they can, you know, say all, they can categor, they can characterize things however they want, but that doesn't mean any, it doesn't mean a decision. It just, they're characterizing it, but.
I'll acknowledge that the code enforcement policy and procedures is, is, is being conducted independent of this process. I will acknowledge that, you know, we do have the, the testimony on the record from representatives of Rhinestone Ranch. Following the said meeting on, on January 7th, representatives of Rhinestone Ranch were encouraged to submit additional detail regarding their activities. No submittal was provided then. Following the preparation of the memorandum that you read from Commissioner Henderson, we also verbally, on multiple occasions, suggested that they consider providing additional testimony within the record to clarify their activities, and, and no submittal was provided.
But, you know, that isn't unusual, or surprising to me, because they're, they're now under the gun about whether they're doing something illegal. Why do they want to?
Yeah, I'm just.
Put it out there on the record, we do this, this. It's like, they, I'm not sure they know any more than I know what you can and can't do. I, I don't know how you find this stuff out. I'm just, I'm just saying.
I don't mean to interrupt. I.
We could have asked those things. If we knew this was all coming up, we could have literally asked them during a hearing. We didn't know this was all a big factor. We, so, and we understood when we were doing it, that, that there'd been a meeting that, where it looked like, from CDD's standpoint, that these things, that what they were doing were approved. So we proceed through a hearing, soliciting that kind of information. We didn't.
And, and again, please forgive me for my, my multiple interruptions. I just want to acknowledge that the, the additional information that you're requesting was in fact requested and not provided. And I understand there may be a particular reason for that on, on their behalf, but we, we as well are not, don't not.
We were here. Not, I can see why they wouldn't, somebody wouldn't want to come back and testify about things when they're, someone else is complaining about them. And, and, but I'm talking about, they were here originally and talked, and, and we do, we do know, you know, we had access, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I'm acknowledging that that request was made in January 7th of 2019 to provide additional.
Twenty nineteen, a year ago.
Correct.
Not this year.
Correct.
So perhaps, I mean, I'm, I assume the commissioners agree that the, the clear equine-related activities occurring at Rhinestone Ranch may occur without a land use permit?
Correct.
Well, that's what we're told. I mean, that's what the memo says, right?
I, I, I think we, we need the board's interpretation and direction on that particular issue. I agree with that, too, yeah. And so I would encourage, based on the, the evidence in the record that is traceable to the equine-related uses, that you go through the NIMZAL factors and see if it rises to the level of a youth activity center.
Okay.
Is that?
Yes.
You're talking about the assumption that, that paragraph I read, let's assume that's the scope of what we're considering. Now, we're going to apply the 10 steps.
Yes, and I would encourage the board to put blinders on to other activities that are perhaps occurring, and let the code enforcement case work itself out on things that go beyond what you consider an equine-related use. Is that?
It makes sense, yes.
So do you want me to walk through the factors again?
Sure, please.
So the first is whether or not there's a separate building, facility, or area for the use?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'll acknowledge that I support equine activities on this partial, but I'm not going to go down this path again.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Baum, thank you. The next factor is youth recreation activity accommodated regularly?
Yes.
Yes, it was documented by several letters, too.
Adult supervision provided?
Yes.
Specific toys, games, or equipment available for activity?
Yes.
Saddles and helmets.
Is it a permitted or licensed activity, or activities, excuse me?
It was permitted, because it was equine.
So, when we developed this standard of permitted or license, I thought we were talking about the affirmative action of permitting or licensing something. In other words, you have to go in and turn in an application, you get a permit. That's different than allowed. We're kind of reading this as, like what you were saying, as it's an allowed activity. I don't know that they went and got a permit to do it. So it wasn't, you know what I'm saying? Because when we, on the last round with the 4-H club, it's a permitted, allowed activity, but I don't think it's a permitted, application-driven. So which is the test?
Factor.
So the factor was whether there had been an application, that kind of permitted, right?
Yes, and the importance of that is then there's a paper trail, frankly. It can be discovered. It, well, it's the importance it can be discovered, it's the importance that, you know, it's something more significant than just a neighborhood gathering of children. But yes, it's always been my understanding.
See, I think in most cases on these, we would have that be a no. But Sterling Drive, it was permitted, because they went in and got a permit to do some of the activities. So that would have been a yes on that one, but it, in other words, it's not the same kind of, it sounds weird, yes-no situation.
Allowed, yes. It's, it's allowed.
I mean, maybe.
Not permitted.
There is, but there is no evidence of a land use permit for Rhinestone Ranch. And if you interpret that.
But there doesn't need to be one.
Asking that question. Yeah, I think that's, is, are we, well, it's your factor, commissioners. I mean, you guys can interpret it how you want. But my understanding and how we were treating this factor before is whether or not there was a, a land use permit or other, some other kind of permit for the activity.
Right.
Not whether or not it was allowed without a land use permit.
So this would actually be a no, then, in this case? It's, it's a, not a permitted, like you said, that would give notice to the world?
Yes, there's no land use permit.
But then again, there was a note in the record saying that you could find out in Redmond, through the county 4-H board, that she was a registered, she actually did 4-H there, too.
I, I think the last factor, whether it's being marketed to the public, is where those kinds of other, that's where that, that analysis comes into play.
Okay.
So no on the permitted or licensed activity. The next factor is organized group activities?
Yes.
Yes.
School-related activities?
I wonder what school means, because they say it's writing schools, writing lessons. Are we talking about government schools? I mean, when we set that standard, I don't remember what it was.
Could be for the equestrian team at their school. I mean, you know, if you want to extrapolate.
That's true.
So it could, could, definitely, because our schools here do have equestrian and rodeo teams for the high schools?
But I don't know if there's any evidence that this was.
We don't know.
I don't know.
Okay.
I guess you'd put unsure.
Usage, the frequency, regularity, intensity, number of participants exceeds the usual EFU use by 50% or more.
Yes.
Probably.
The use is observable from neighboring properties.
Yes.
Yes.
And the youth activities marketed to the public.
It was.
And so then, based on, remember the factors guide the conversation, based on that conversation, do the commissioners believe that it rises to the level of a youth activity center?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the last issue similar to with the 4-H club, is there additional evidence that's been submitted into the record that suggests that that determination was foreseeable?
Additional evidence.
In just the last hearing and the last stuff we've got in?
Yes, because of course, the original record has already been reviewed and decided on by Luba, is not suggesting that it was foreseeable.
Well, again, so there was evidence, I don't know specifically, it might not have been by the person that owns Rhinestone Ranch, but there was.
There's a letter in the record from Michael Gottlieb, Gottlieb, and dated February 4th, 2020, and saying that, "My client has informed me that the applicant did not reach out to any of them in any manner prior to submitting the land use application. A simple phone call, letter, or visit to my client's property and other properties nearby on the applicant's property would have fully informed the applicant of the activities conducted on the surrounding properties."
See, I think this would be a more, somebody that has a sign saying they do a business would be even less, it'd be more friendly than just a neighbor who has a house down the driveway. So in terms of this issue of reaching out, but I don't know if that's new evidence about that, but it's definitely there.
The sign was discussed in the original.
Yeah. Now, what about all the things that, in terms of marketing, there was this whole, by putting their code enforcement complaint in, or whoever did that, it has all the marketing stuff in here. It would make, if you'd seen all this, you'd wonder what was going on, and you might go ask before, you know, back before you needed to file a complaint. I guess that would be something that would make it more, this, the stuff that's, but I don't know if this dates back to the time of the application, but it's, what's put in here about the code enforcement complaint has all the, I don't know if these are Facebook or website stuff.
As I recall, the fact that they had a website was noted by the applicant in the original record. I don't.
But was this all put in? Was all this detail put in? If you looked at it, it's like, hmm, they must be doing something there. I'd be more serious than that. It'd be, they are doing something there, maybe I should go check. So that would be something you could note as to what additional evidence was, I had really a filling out of the marketing things.
Commissioner Henderson, I'm hearing that the additional data certainly suggests that there was a, that the additional data shows that it was perhaps foreseeable.
Yeah, it's as easy to find, it's easier to find this website, I'll bet you, than it is to find whether they're a certified licensed government body. I don't know what the website is.
RhinestoneRanch.com.
Well, that's what I Google, and that takes about three seconds.
Yes.
Rhinestone Ranch, and.
Okay.
I don't know where it is.
Commissioner, I dare do you agree there's additional evidence that suggests that it was foreseeable?
Yes.
Well, that was the first issue.
Okay.
I'll turn it over to Matt to continue on with the matrix.
So second item that Luba remanded on was evaluation of compliance with the odor standards. The, the proposal includes a provision of an ionization system to control odor. That system was specifically described in the application materials, as well as testimony from the, the Oregon licensed engineer, Mr. Whitaker. Now, the, I want to acknowledge that in the board's decision, original decision, it, it specified that odor control was discussed, but no formal finding was concluded during, in, in that section of the decision. But also want to acknowledge that those items not otherwise specified or found within that decision were adopted, because the underlying administrative decision did find that the proposal complied with the odor standard.
Right.
Now, my understanding is that this item wasn't necessarily disputed during proceedings at the Land Use Board of Appeals, but one of the referees did acknowledge that, that discussion, but not conclusion, in the, in the decision, and therefore remanded it for therefore remanded it for, um, board consideration. Uh, I want to acknowledge that, again, during the remand process, uh, the, the applicant did provide additional testimony regarding the odor system, and, um, the, Mr. Whitaker, the engineer, did provide, um, additional testimony. No other discussion was, was, um, was made by other parties during the remand process. So, the question before you is whether the, uh, the proposed, um, odor control system complies with the odor standard of Deschutes County Code.
So, a question then, from a, uh, publishing a decision point of view, is this basically just saying the word, yes, we support the fact that the applicant has done it? I mean, just kind of a yes or no answer from us as a group evaluating this application?
Um-
The written decision says, "Information in the record supports that the fact that, yes, it does or does not comply."
I'm not, I'm sorry, Commissioner Baum, I don't-
Uh, when Luba hands this back to us and says, "We didn't put enough information", I mean, is, we're not going to write up a, I mean, we're just going to make a decision, yes or no, I guess, is, is what a governing body would do at this point. Isn't that correct?
So, I, I think, um, forgive me for a long explanation, um, or, excuse me, a long answer. The complexity to this issue comes from, neither the applicant or the, the county staff contested this matter in front of Luba. The, the way the decision was drafted before, the original decision, uh, the county commissioners, uh, did not reach a formal conclusion on the odor control system as, uh, um, demonstrated by the applicant whether or not it met the code. Thereby, our understanding was, is that the staff's original decision, which found that it met the Deschutes County Code, held. Since the board didn't change those conclusions, that staff's original decision held, uh, was the final answer from the county. Luba, on their own accord, noted, perhaps there's something more on odor, and so that's why it's a remand issue that's come back in front of you. Uh, the applicant has argued back in front of you, number one, this is law of the case, you already decided that the odor, uh, was sufficient. Nonetheless, here's our engineers providing testimony on the issue. Um, and my understanding is, is there's not, uh, any evidence, um, challenging the applicant's engineers', uh, representations on the odor. So, it's, it's only-
So, it's up, well, it's whether we want to bring it up as an issue, is really the issue. We could just let it rest the way it is with the original decision, or we could say, um-
Yes.
Given it a second thought, here's where we are. So, my second thought is about the, I have serious doubts that the ionization system will work. I, I think if it did, other people would be using it, because it's less expensive to operate supposedly than the carbon ones are. So, that's interesting. If it was really effective, why don't we see it? But the second one, though, I did reread the testimony by the original opponent, um, I guess who's no longer involved in, to talk about the, um, poisoning aspect of the byproduct of the ionization systems and the danger to human life. And so, um, that's a concern to me, because in theory, or in, in, in practice, what might happen is it might work, but you can't do it because it, it's harmful to humans. So, you really don't have an odor system that, if you take both, the evidence that it works over here and the fact that it's, causes bad effects to humans over here, you probably wouldn't use it, because humans have to go in and out of these things. So, that's my, my question is, well, so is it really going to work in the law? And there's kind of, to me, there's substantial evidence offered by both sides. So, I do have a little bit different take than I had the first time I, when we first talked about this after the decision from Luba, because I really hadn't thought about that. So, that's where I am.
Well, and I support that there's engineering, uh, documentation showing, uh, proof of the system on paper. So, I support an approval. Uh, the fact that it needs to be built as designed, and then also, uh, you know, proven with an annual review, so we're providing that, uh, through our community development department. And if the, if a neighbor detects smell, uh, there can be a complaint that can be followed up on. Uh, and this, uh, system being a ionizing system, uh, you know, if there's an exhaust fan that needs a carbon filter, it could be added. So, I mean, the, all possibilities are out there, and I support the engineering of the, uh, documentation of the application.
And we were told by Mr. Whitaker that the ionized odor particles are harmless. They drop to the ground and can be effectively removed by sweeping. So, you know, the testimony that was given to us said, yes, it is going to work, and yes, effectively removed. So, we're, we're told that it is, um, it's positive. Um, and, you know, I guess we'll have to see. Because there is a safety issue out there. But, the, the, um, you know, the engineer is saying it's okay.
So, this gets back to where I started. I, so then a written record would just state that the governing body accepts original conclusion of, uh, decision?
My, my understanding, I think it's two to one that the commissioners agree with the, uh, staff's original decision.
Yeah.
Is that-
Yes.
And Commissioner Henderson, you're, uh, no vote on that?
Yeah. And then so that, yeah, okay. A written decision will say, "Support." Okay.
Are there any other issues that the commissioners want to address in the decision?
No, I, I believe, Mr. Henderson, are you?
Uh, yeah, I don't think there's any others before us.
Okay.
So, based on, um, two to one vote, uh, deny the application because, uh, both Rhinestone Ranch and 4-H Club rise to the level of youth activity center. Um, my understanding, staff will, of course, diligently work on that decision. We have a couple few weeks, uh, before the deadline to submit that decision. Um, I don't know, I'll turn it over to Matt to talk through timing if there's any issues there.
Yeah, so the, uh, the final date for the county to issue a, a decision is April 4th, happens to fall on a Saturday. Um, but we have intervening a couple, three weeks to draft and prepare and, and present a, a decision before the board to, uh, review and, and consider for adoption. So, I'd expect to come back sometime late March or that first day of April.
I think we'll endeavor to have a draft decision to the fourth for their review, uh, well before that timeframe.
Yes, that would be better.
Certainly, yeah. I just want to acknowledge that for that final adoption, um, it, it would be, um-
All right.
For that time period.
Because we, we will need to look at it in detail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Matthew.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay. So, do we have any additional business now?
Uh, commissioners, we do. I, I think they, there's a press conference in this room at 1:00. They would, they would like to get in and begin preparing for that, but-
Get ready for it?
Um, we do have several executive sessions, uh, that are scheduled for property, uh, as well as, uh, just a couple of quick other items. Um, so, it's your pleasure. We could either, uh, reconvene upstairs to do those, or try and do some of those now, or you could, uh, reconvene, and you may want to attend the press conference, that's your choice.
Yes.
Um, or reconvene after the press conference, whatever your pleasure.
Okay, so that's at 1:00, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to want to be here early, and that's going to be in like 40 minutes. So, I think we maybe should reconvene at, what, 2? And then what time do we have to go to Sisters, though, by 5?
Well, I have to go to Redmond at 3:00, so, but we can get everything done in an hour, can't we, if we reconvene at 2?
Up to you.
Yeah, we can.
Always depends on the number of questions, but yeah.
Not a land use decision.
Yes, of course we can. Okay, so we'll reconvene upstairs at 2:00, then.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Recession for now.
We're, yeah, we're recessing until 2.
What about this memo we got on the COVID night?